Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and try to open our regular session of the Joplin Schools Board of Education for this March 24th, 2000, as we observe social distancing in connection with the COVID-19 pandemic. I would entertain a roll call at this time. Pat?
Deborah Gould.
Eric.
Eric D'Amont.
Here.
Brent George.
President.
Lori Mustard.
Chair.
Dr. Fort.
President.
And Dr. Joseph.
President.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever to be touched and to be broken. Thank you all. I kind of stumbled through that myself. I kind of forgot where I was. So we'd now, I'd like to approve the agenda with the following amendment. We would like to propose the approval of the adoption of the Jasper and Bye County Hazard Mitigation Plan to the regular agenda. Was there something else, Doctor?
We just need to discuss the April Board meeting date, but that's not necessarily an official agenda item, but I don't want us to forget to talk about that.
Thank you very much. We will bring up the April Board meeting date as well. So do I have a motion to approve as amended?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
I think it was Deborah who was in there first. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. Please vote.
Yeah.
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 Yes. Thank you, everyone. That brings us to celebrations this evening. The Casey Wolf Shares, the ABCs of Success. Casey Wolf, Dan Mirers. Am I appropriate? Am I right here? Okay. I thought I might be getting ahead of myself. The Casey Wolf, Dan Mirers Visited Cecil Floyd Elementary to Share with Students the Importance of a Positive Attitude, Good Behavior, and Character. That's the ABCs of Success. We thank Mr. Mirers for coming to Joplin and to Cecil Floyd and sharing that with us. Passport Adventure. Joplin Schools participated in a professional development opportunity offered by the Southwest Center in February. The Passport Adventure began with teachers choosing an instructional strategy, trying it in their classroom, and tweeting photos of their strategy at work. Joplin Schools Foundation generally supported two weekly drawings for a $150 classroom shopping spree to the following teachers that participated. Chelsea Meyer at Royal Heights, Dale Hoggett at Cecil Floyd, Juliana Hughes at Joplin High School, Katie Verden at McKinley, Abby Dur at South Middle School, Jordan Gosserd at Royal Heights, Emily Wade at North Middle School, and Nikki Allen at Columbia. We certainly appreciate the foundation for their support for those classroom shopping sprees. The eighth grade annual Joplin Globe Writing Contest. Area high school students had the opportunity to exhibit extraordinary writing skills in personal narratives, short stories, and poetry to compete in the Globe's annual writing contest. Joplin High School was represented when the honors were handed out. Congratulations to Hannah Crouch, a Joplin High School senior. She was awarded first place for her short story, 11th and 12th Grade Division, Hamsters in Party Hats: An Allegory for Feminism Lost. That sounds hilarious to me. Stone Carter, a Joplin High School sophomore, was awarded second place for his short story in the 9th, 10th grade division for his story called Lost. Congratulations to those two. We continue with the eighth grade, with the, I'm going to mispronounce this name, but I'm going to try it. Mary Baranek, a Joplin High School freshman. She was awarded third place for her short story in the 9th and 10th Division, The Lost Island. Morgan Cravens, a Joplin High School junior, received first place in poetry for the 11th and 12th Division for The Road for the Lost. Sounds like Lost is a significant theme that we're going, as it even continues to miss. Emily Nelson, a Joplin High School sophomore, for her second-place poetry entry for the 9th, 10th Division, He Found Me. Good for Emily. She found maybe what was lost, so that's great. So we want to congratulate those students for their writing prowess. As we move to Franklin Technology Center Career Fair. The FTC's annual career fair was held in early March. Over 70 representatives from colleges, universities, career and technical schools, branches of the military, and local businesses and industries participated. The reps were available to offer post-secondary education and career guidance to approximately 1,600 sophomore, junior, and senior students at FTC and JHS. So thanks a lot for doing that, folks. Breaking Barriers in History. Each year, more than half a million students participate in National History Day competitions. The contest spans traditional history curriculum by engaging students in a hands-on and in-depth study of the past. This year's National History Day theme is Breaking Barriers in History. Regional students submitted original papers, websites, exhibits, performances, and documentaries on March 6th at Missouri Southern State University. Great job to those students. Joplin High School, Joplin Schools Junior Regional History Day Awards in the junior group category of documentaries. In third place, Ella Grady and Alyssa Peralta from South Middle School. Elizabeth Blackwell, Changing Medical History. In the junior group website category, first place was awarded John Jasper and David Bend. They are from South Middle School. And Fritz Pollard, I'm not sure how to read these entries, I apologize. Breaking the Coaching Color Barrier. Fritz Pollard, I assume, is the person who did that. Junior Individual Documentary. Second place was Macy Oakes of South Middle School. Stonewall, Not Only a Dive Bar But a Home. And the Junior Individual Documentary. First place, Joseph Schuler from South Middle School. Corona: Secret Snapshots from Space. Somewhat ironic there. That's right. A positive, that's what Corona comes from. My wife and I talked about that. It's that little thing around the outside of the sun. Halo. At any rate, Joplin Schools Junior Regional History Day Awards continued. Junior Individual Website. Second place, Alex Brady of South Middle School. Stan Lee, A Marvelous Life. Great name for that website. Junior Individual Website. First place, Alexandra Carson from South Middle School. Shooting Through Barriers: The Oz to Eden Adventures of Martin and Osa Johnson. Junior Individual Performance. Third place, Katrina Becker, South Middle School. The Stonewall Riots: Setting the Ball Rolling for LGBTQ and Equality. And Junior Individual Performance. First place, Adeline Dunn of South Middle School. Robert the Bruce: Breaking English Barriers for the Freedom of the Scots. More History Day Awards. The Junior Paper. Third place, Mia Coin of South Middle School. Nellie Bly, the pioneering investigative journalist and how she contributed to the medial. Junior Paper. First place, Tyler Thompson, North Middle School. Tearing Down Dams: Restoring the Elwaha River. Elwah River. I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Joplin Schools Senior Regional History Day Awards. The Senior Individual Documentary. First place, Grace Cater. George Washington Carver, Scientist, Innovator, and Educator. Sign Language Club. McKinley Elementary has four deaf or hard-of-hearing students and a handful of other students that use sign language to help them communicate. Lori Orr, a deaf educator, and Katie Rattles, Sign Language Interpreter, started a club to teach hearing students sign language to better communicate with their peers. The over 50 students who signed up are not only learning sign language, but also tolerance, empathy, and cooperation. Great job to those folks. That takes us to our Superintendent's Data Report. Dr. Moss.
Okay. We have Ms. Shelley Tarter with us on our Google Hangout, and she is going to give us an update on high school alternative programs.
Hello, everyone. How are you this evening?
Good.
Thanks, Shelley. Good. I'm going to give us guys to keep up with what's going on. Then Eric, if I can get it, you know, if you would go back.
Eric, do you have something to pull up? Okay.
I do, if you can get it, yeah.
Shelley, do you need him to go ahead?
No, I'm going ahead and pull up because I cannot deliver the plug this morning.
There you go.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. I know it's been a while since the alternative programs have sort of been planned, and I've taken the full month of weeks as part of the members. So when I was talking to Dr. Moss about it, I was like, maybe we'll just come and just go over each of the programs, and you guys can ask questions, and see what we're actually doing over at the Roya Woods campus. So Eric, so we can the next one. So we have guys, who are going on. We've got JAG, which is Doctor America's Graduate. We've got Equal Flex, which is day and night options. And then we've got Majority Options. And then we have the Virtual School. So I'm going to go through these things, and they're pretty simple. So the first one, I think you guys have pretty much heard about. I know some of our students have presented to you guys. It's JAG. So it's for students who are currently in ninth through 12 springs. They are students that have potential, but they're just not living at school potential. So principals and counselors recommend those students for the program. Doing JAG specialist interviews with students, that are in the interviews as well. And the JAG support is looking for high indicators at least that comes out in the interview that qualifies them for their program. So the areas that he is working at are academic, physical and psychological, environmental, work-related, or anything to do with maybe psychology, or the consequences that's not there. So along with that program, and it is an all-day program, it's over at the Roya Woods Building. There are currently 15 students in that program. They are working on credits for graduation, and then they're also working on the JAG competencies, which are skill competencies that will help them in the future, whether they go to a junior college or university, maybe they go to a college, and maybe go to a tech school. But it's preparing them for whatever it is that they decide to do after they graduate.
So the, I'm starting.
We move to the next one. So our next one is our Equal Flex program. So it was established in the fall of 2010. It was actually to boost the balance of legislation that was signed by Governor Nixon in the summer of 2009. So what Equal Flex is supposed to do is provide a non.
Hey, Shelley. Shelley, Eric thinks he knows why we're getting, why we're getting a lot of feedback on our end. I don't know if the rest are hearing this. I think he thinks he can fix it for us. Just give us a moment.
Hey, does some, is somebody calling in and watching it on their computer and hasn't muted it on their computer?
Nobody's answering.
No. No.
I don't think anybody's on both.
What if they all muted their mics during her presentation and then unmuted when we finish?
Yeah, that might do.
Yeah, let's try muting your mics unless you've got a comment or she finishes her Let's see if that helps us.
I do have a question and answer of the variant, so if you guys want to have questions there.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if that helps.
See if that helps. Okay, so back to the Equal Flex program. It is a non-traditional educational pathway that students can actually earn a diploma. They have to go through 24 credits to get their diploma rather than 25. 24 is what the state recommends. So since this is a state program, that's the amount of credits that this program is held to. It is helping with the dropout rate. It is providing a transition program to adulthood for those kids. It is available for 11th and 12th graders who are identified by their principals or counselors that are at least a semester behind in credit. So these kids have to attend school two instructional hours per school day. They are actually spending three hours a day instead of two with us, and I'll get to that in just a little bit. Besides going to school, they have to have employment. So for every 75 hours that they work, they do have to turn in paycheck stuff. Not that we want to see what they're actually making. We need to see the amount of hours that they're working. So for every 75 hours they work, they receive a half a credit of elective. So through their work and through their schoolwork that they're doing actually physically at the Roya Woods Building, it is allowing them to obtain credit quicker and faster since they're behind. One big component of this is they have to have a 95% attendance rate, and that is required from the bill. So for instance, it's not that many days that they can miss. Once they miss, they are dropped from the program. That does not mean that they can't come back. That just means that they're dropped for that semester. They can come back to the program that next semester. We do not have many students that drop. They really understand the attendance requirement. So for students, since they're working, since they're going to school, they are actually considered a full-time student to the school district, and so we can actually count them in our daily attendance for our student purposes. So the next program we have is no options. So the no options program is going to target kids who are 17 to 20 years of age. They are at least a year behind, or there's no way that they're going to be able to get their diploma and graduate with their cohort group. So graduation through the no-op program is not dependent on credit. These kids have to attend school three hours a day. So before when I was talking about flex and flex kids could go two hours a day, what we did in 20, like, what, like, three years ago, four years ago, no-op and flex were combined, so we had one teacher. So that's why we went to the three-hour block is because we have both programs in one setting at a time. So these kids, the no-option kids, have to pass and complete these courses. Algebra one, English two, Biology, Government, Personal Sciences, and Health. Then Mr. Armstrong will test these kids. He's working for, in the area of math and reading, that they have at least a ninth-grade level, because that's what we have found that is very helpful for them to pass the HICE. So the HICE is actually replaced with GED. It replaced it in January of 2014. So the HICE has testing areas of language arts, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. They have to pass all five of those tests in order for them to pass the HICE. So a little history, more history on that is prior to 2014, the students' test scores when they took the HICE belongs to the actual LEA building or district. And the district was responsible for paying for the tests that those kids took. And it's $100 for the kids to take all five tests. But back in 2019, the Missouri Legislature passed that the scores are actually going to belong to the students. And so then that took the responsibility off the district for the students to pay for their tests. What we found when that happened was that a lot of students couldn't afford to pay for their tests. They just didn't have the money to pay for them, so several of those kids just didn't take the test. But in 2019, Missouri passed what's called vouchers for first-time test takers. So if a student is taking the test for the first time, they're going to apply for these vouchers to start at February 1st. They're scheduled to take their test. The test is paid for through these vouchers, so the students wouldn't have to pay for them any longer. And so far, since February 1st, Mr. Armstrong has scheduled nearly 100 tests that these kids are going to take. And the kids are excited about not having to pay for the test, and we've found that they're more eager to get done since they do not have to pay for the test. So it's been a good thing, and we're hoping that the vouchers continue. So with Day Flex, no options, there are two sessions, but like, did they need to go to school at least three hours? So we've got a morning session from 3:00 to 11:30, this is the Roya Woods campus. And then we have a 12:30 to 1:30 for 3:30 science, and that is also the Roya Woods campus. So that's where I told you no options and Day Flex are combined. We also have a separate Day Flex that's from 1:30 to 3:30, and that is only flex kids. That's not no-option kids. We also have what we call a Night Flex from 4 to 6. It is Monday through Thursday in the evenings at the Roya Woods campus. It's what we call a gateway program, so it doesn't follow the guidelines that I told you about for the flex program. Basically, what that program is, is that those kids that may be dropped out, don't want to come back, try to get them back established into the school system and the school setting. So the hope for that program is, or the way it's working, is that once they really get, where they feel comfortable there, then they're going to go to the Day Flex program, or they could go through the no-option program, depending on the age and how many credits they're behind. So this year, Day Flex and no options, we service 70 students, and we have over 40 expected to graduate. And actually, that's increased. We've looked at probably over 48 kids expecting graduation. Night Flex, we've got 27 students currently. We had one of those students go to Day Flex, two have went to no options, two have actually completed and graduated through the program, and one has went back to Day Flex, one went to virtual learning, and then five students just dropped from the program itself. Eric? So then that brings us to the virtual program that's also out of the Roya Woods campus. So this was established with still six of us, and it states that all Missouri students during K through 12 will have access to online classes the beginning of the school year 2019 through 2020. I feel very fortunate with Joplin Schools that we started online learning prior to this, back in January of 2019. So we, I feel like we are way ahead of the game when it came to this, in a good place where maybe other districts that had not had experience with online learning, it really set us up very nicely. So we are off, the way it was presented that the bill came across was that it is to equalize high-quality courses across the state. It is to provide flexibility in scheduling. It is to make sure that all the courses that kids are taking online are vetted through DECE. What that means is that DECE has hired a third-party vendor. That vendor has looked through all of the different vendors that have applied to be vetted through DECE for the online programs, making sure that those courses are following the certain standards, that they're rigorous, and that their grade level appears good. So for students being in the virtual program, they must be enrolled in their home school district, so we don't take students outside of Joplin Schools for our virtual school. We cannot allow them to take more than what's considered a full-time, which is six courses. And the enrollment process for virtual cannot be different than what we are doing for a traditional student. So with Joplin, we are using two different vendors. For K through 5, we're using a Stella. For 6 through 12, we are using Agnewity. To enroll in virtual learning, as I said before, they must be a resident of Joplin Schools. They have to enroll at the school that they would normally go to, using the same enrollment process as a traditional student would be using Go Home. But then after there, they can request a virtual learning form. The form needs to be filled out by the student and the parent. The student is to take that form to the principal and to the counselor and talk with them and make sure that they feel like this is a good fit. The principal and the counselor will write whether they agree, disagree, whatever. Then from there, the high school, if they're a high school-level student, they have to meet with their counselor and come up with an ICAH, which is a year's plan for the courses that they're going to be taking online. From there, we have a meeting where it's going to be myself, the principal, the students, the parent guardians, the counselors, and we're going to discuss, is this a good fit for the kid? Is this something where they're going to be educationally successful? And if we approve them, then we take them through the enrollment process of getting their courses and getting them online. So when it goes online, they are getting a Chromebook from us to use. They are purchasing insurance on that Chromebook. Myself and Miss Ware, who is my administrative assistant, are monitoring the kids along with teachers. We are making weekly phone calls home, making sure that the kids are making progress. If they are not making progress, then we are talking to the parents about why, what needs to happen, how things need to change. Is this really a good fit? Do we need to send the student back? That has happened. Depending on what grades that they're at, high school, it's pretty hard to send a student back if we are in the, you know, after a semester is started, because they won't get credit if they've missed a bunch of the semester already. So those kids just stay online and continue working their way through. Some of the elementary and some of the middle school students, we have sent back. There's also email reports that are sent out to the parents daily or weekly, depending on what the parent wants through those systems. Right now, currently, we, in high school, we have 80 students going virtual. We have full and we have part-time students. Middle school, we have 22 students, full and part-time. Elementary, we are currently at five full-time students. Questions? I know I covered a lot.
Thank you, Shelley, very much for that presentation. You did cover a lot. Does anybody have any questions for Shelley?
Shelley, I have a question. On the virtual studies, at what cost is there to the student or family?
There is no cost to the student or family. They, like I said, they have to be enrolled in Joplin Schools. So if they're enrolled in us, they can use our platform for free, which is Agnewity.
And Brent, with virtual students, we are collecting ADA on those students through the state.
Yeah, I know. Is this, this used to be the NOVIP program? Is that?
Yeah. And that was.
I know at one time, the cost went back and forth between the students and the district, and I just, I really didn't know where it was at for sure, so.
Yeah. Now, I mean, there is, there are third-party vendors that some of the parents have requested, that we, a lot of our kids do not know that we offer it. So once I informed them that, you know, we sell our program here, that we can. So once I informed them that, you know, we sell our program here, that we can move, those parents, you know, are going to help, for the most part. Because they're so confident in Joplin Schools, which makes us very happy.
And I believe, Brent, with that Senate bill that passed, I think we've been able to hang on to students that would have migrated to the MoBit third-party vendors. And it's actually going to help us in terms of ultimate enrollment and ADA in those situations.
Sure. Yeah.
That's awesome.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for all the programs. I think that's wonderful that we have options for our students that the traditional school, eight, fifteen, day doesn't work. Wanted to encourage the students taking the test that they can actually get scholarships to crowd around the three students, depending on their scores on the high-stake programs, so. Share that with, I'm sure Mr. Armstrong probably already knows that, but just in case, encourage those kids to go for the scholarships.
Now, we met with Penny at Franklin Tech, who is the director there of the adult program. And she has been coming over and reviewing with the students along with some of the other directors of the specific program. And we've kind of partnered with them and really honed in on how could we help get these kids that were wanting to go that same route? How can we get them to Franklin Tech using how that maybe grants provided through the Missouri unemployment office?
And thank you for mentioning that, Shelley, because Franklin Tech is vitally important. Technology school is a great route, so.
Yeah, and the kids, a lot of the kids are very interested in those programs. Anything else, guys?
Well, I know your workload has increased as the year has progressed, and I think it's testament to the work you're doing that enrollment in all these programs are expanding, and we're definitely seeing the need.
Yeah, I love it there. I just love your kids. I would encourage you, if you haven't been over to the Royal Woods campus, come over anytime and visit us and visit the details, and we would love to thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next thing on data report, I think, is health and dental plan update. Dr. Langford.
Shelley? She was asleep?
As they enter the room.
We're still at 10. We're good.
Yeah, no, we have the door shut, so we're good. Shelley's going to do the dental report, and I'll talk back to you.
Shelley, we note for the record that Dr. Langford is pushing more and more of the bad stuff onto your side of the table.
Every day.
Yeah, but we sure appreciate Dr. Langford.
Yeah, we do.
The Health and Dental Fund continues to track along as expected. At the end of this February, we had spent $4,587,726.82, or 54.77% of our budget. Last year, at the same time, we had spent $3,752,446. So we are a little farther ahead this year, but we did know that we were going to have some increases that we had talked about in previous months. If you look at the monthly summary page, you'll see that we ended our health fund at the end of this month at $5,604,319.6. Let's see, yawn down to the next one, Eric. And then, in the dental fund, we ended the month with a balance of $364,575.75, which was about $35,106 less at the same time last year. But we did know that we were going to continue to see a decline in that dental fund. We'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Shelley, for that report. Does anybody have any questions concerning the health and dental report? Does anybody anticipate adjustments next year to the contributions? Are we ahead of that?
We have a committee, we will eventually have a committee and sit down and look at that again. We're cautiously optimistic at this point.
Great.
Until we really get another month or two under our belt, we will be meeting for that purpose.
Thank you, doctor.
Then on the financial report, which follows, it's really funny how situations can change very rapidly, as we all know from the last meeting, to this meeting, and this room sits empty because of that.
I'm sticky on those return rates.
And just for your information, you know, we put in the Missouri Securities Investment Program, which is called MOSIP. And as of the closing day of February, in debt service, health fund, scholarship fund, capital projects fund, in the general fund, we have earned $990,000. And that's really great news. When we back out the health fund and back out the debt service fund, which we don't have discretion over those, and the scholarship fund, we've earned $770,000, which were able to flow into this year's budget to help us with capital projects and school operations. In Washington, there's been a lot going on, and when the Federal Reserve Board meets on Sunday and makes a major decision, that kind of lets you know the urgency of the problem. And they have now dropped those rates to zero to .25, which means we were at one time, one of the highest ones, we were about 2.74%. And now we're looking down at a quarter percent potentially. We still get a little bit more from the MOSIP program, but we're predicting that we're going to lose of that $770,000 discretion. We're going to lose close to 650 of that, which we will not have available in our budget for next year. When you look at the current balance sheet, for comparative last year, it's tracking, just as we anticipated that it would. We don't see any major issues with the balance sheet. Those things that are down, the expenditures are up, we can explain. The revenues that are down, we can explain. I don't ever want to be an alarmist, but I've always been, tried to be pragmatic, because we cannot, one of the biggest mistakes we can make is setting, not facing the reality that we're dealing with. This economic situation that we're in right now will have impact, even though it's very quiet. Actually, they were getting ready for spring break, and they had, the House was going to work the week before spring break. The Senate was not, for the purpose of getting the preliminary budget together, because it's their responsibility to start it. That's all been pulled away now. And there's a major concern about the revenue for the state of Missouri. And though they're not talking about it in Jefferson City, if you track that, you just know that there is a major concern about available monies for the remainder of this year. And then, if the base is lowered beginning next year. So I just say these things to let you know that we will be watching very, very, very closely. But a month ago, we were very excited about looking forward to the next school year, but things happen. And we're still excited about school, because it's for the kids, and that's why we're here. But the resources we have are going to be stretched a bit next year. The good news is, the Joplin Schools' fund balances right now are adequate, that we don't have to get into a panic mode if we were setting at 7%. And I did an analysis of some school districts, and I did find a rather large school district that has only 7%. Our percentage is much better than that, so that does help us be able to stand back and take a look. But we need to cautiously be anticipating that the account, or the financial report for this year may begin to look different in the last couple of months of this year. And the folks in Jefferson City will have a very difficult task before them to try to work through this process. Because if the water's not in the bucket, they can't give everybody a drink.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning our financial statements? I would, I would offer this, doctor, is, without offering any panic of any sort, should we reconsider our long-term capital improvement projects in terms of certain maintenance that we have approved in past months and things of that nature?
I think I want to yield that discussion with Dr. Moss. We've had discussion about that very question, because I raised the same question. We need to come back and take a look. I think what you're dealing with tonight are deemed that, for instance, the buses, that's a major expenditure, but our bus fleet fell so far behind.
Right.
We're still in the catch-up mode with it. And you can't let the air conditioning. So these are monies that are allocated, that if we shift those monies out into other areas of reoccurring expenses, we never get them back. So you could be kicking the can down the road for deferred maintenance programs. So I spoke more than I intended to speak about that.
Well, and I think it's, I think it's relevant for Sherri to know that we actually did pull a couple of the items that we had originally been going to put on this month's list, just because we felt like it wasn't necessarily an absolute necessity right now. But we've reviewed, Dr. Seketa, Dr. Layford, and I have sat down and reviewed each of the items. And when you've got leaks, and you've got water and degradation, you've got to go ahead and address those things. So we feel good about what's on that list tonight. But just so you know, we are looking at the big list that was approved last month, and we have actually pulled a few things.
That's precisely what I was asking about, and I certainly didn't intend to put Dr. Langford or anybody else on the spot.
That's a legitimate question that should be asked.
And we need to be asking that about all our expenditures right now.
Well, it's funny that you had mentioned exactly what I was thinking about. I wasn't thinking so much about the buses, although obviously, perhaps I should. But those other expenditures that we discussed just kind of come to mind. We are in unprecedented territory tonight, and I hope that, I expect us fully to move forward with an understanding that, of flexibility and potential change. And we're reasonable human beings here, and we're always going to be good stewards of our available funding. Does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Langford? And I thank him for his report, and Shelley for hers as well.
Hey, the next one you have is your enrollment report. And you just heard from Shelley Tartar about how many students we have in virtual and other things that aren't necessarily reflected here. But if I just look at the difference between February and March, and of course, now our world has changed a lot since March 10th, when this report was ran. But we were down 22 students in enrollment, but still up for this time last year. So with that, and we are, I think, Dr. Ford, you had some questions about planning and within the superintendent report, that might be the time to ask those questions.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
So it was discussed, what are we, what are we going to do about reconvening school? And I think that is the million-dollar question on everybody's mind right now. And I will tell you that we really have not had strong discussions of yet about whether we're going to extend past April 3rd. We are continuing to get updates from our Department of Health, from our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, our own governor, who has said, right now, it's an issue of local control. But I know that that's very much a concern of everyone. We want to be cautious and err on the side of safety. So we are planning for short term, but we're also planning for long term. And I know that Ms. Mulongo's been on webinars with grade level and teacher groups constantly for the last two days, and they're looking at what instruction could look like past April 3rd and going forward if we extend this for a few weeks. But I would expect serious discussion and news will ramp up over this week and probably the first half of next, and hopefully, we'll be able to tell our community middle of next week what the plan is beyond April 3rd. At this point, I would not be surprised if we don't extend our time out of school longer.
Mindy, I have a question. I have some grandchildren in Arkansas, and they were sent home, actually, three Fridays ago, with computers, even my kindergarten granddaughter. Where are we at on one-to-one computing in our district?
Well, we are one-to-one with devices issued to each child, eighth grade through 12th grade. But then when you look at how many Chromebook carts and all the different things that over the last couple, three years, our board has approved, we are looking right now at how do we deploy those devices? And how far down in the grades can we extend the devices beyond eighth grade? And Eric Pitcher and different ones have been working really hard to survey. And I'll just, if it's okay with the board, I'll just go ahead and kind of give an update in all those areas that I shared with the press conference today at 11 o'clock at City Hall, because I touched on many things that I think you guys need to know is happening just in the last week. Food service, for instance. We had over 2,300 meals that were ordered for the first day, which yesterday was our first day of meal service. And I think we, after we looked at some, more specifically, of Rick Kinkle's information, we had reported earlier today that we served about 1,700 meals yesterday. And I think that number was closer to 1,550, not meals, but students. Because you can multiply that by two or three when you consider that we're putting not only the lunch items, but also an item for breakfast the next day. So that's a lot of meals being delivered across 25 different drop zones. So our bus drivers are helping us with that. And then also, we're serving grab-and-go curbside at each of our school locations. So we're trying to make sure that our kids are fed during this time. And the USDA approved the format that we have in the summer. So any child 18 or under can get a meal. They just have to show up and get the meal, whether they've enrolled or not. And then as far as learning, yesterday, our teachers, counselors, principals, they started making contact with each of our families. And as of last night, and I haven't gotten tonight's numbers, but as of last night, we had made personal contact with 4,160 of our students. And I thought that was very impressive work for the first day. And a lot of what they're trying to get is, first, how are you doing? But second, does your household have access to a device? And what is your internet connectivity?
Perfect.
And so that's going on now. And our tech department is working really close with our curriculum department to count those devices and figure out how far down we can go. Then our facilities, we're continuing to clean and limit access to staff. So that's why we're going to so many Google Hangouts and Zooms. And then the principals are there, and they're bringing in key personnel as needed to make sure that these functions are carried out. And our custodial staff is continuing to clean up. And then safety and security, we're going to keep our safe rooms open if there's a tornado warning. And that has been communicated, and Jim Houchel has been part of those discussions. So we delivered to 24 locations with our transportation crew. And then we're also looking at transportation, being able to help complete projects around the district. And we're talking with Mercy and Freeman and our city for first responders, and they're gathering data now so that we know approximate numbers of childcare that will be available so that our hospitals and our first responders can continue to function while we're out of school. And we will limit those groups to 10 or less, including their caretakers, once that begins. And that may begin as early as next week. And I want-
May I throw something in there, Mindy?
Certainly.
It's because you mentioned the healthcare, and I know one thing we did out of Southern, since we are now closed down for the rest of the semester, but we moved to online. Let me restate that. We went through and gathered up all of our PPE equipment, respirators, masks, and things that we obviously aren't using. So it's something to think about, should we extend our online learning technology. I don't know if we have a lot of those things. I do know we have lights and things like that in classrooms. So just wanted to take care of our medical people and our first responders, if there's something we could do to help.
Right.
And shout out to all you guys for everything you've done. I know it's been extraordinary.
And that is, I'm glad you brought that up, Deb, because Sherri can test- And that is, I'm glad you brought that up, Deb, because Sherri can testify that right on my paper, the next item is our donation of respiratory therapy items to Freeman and Mercy.
Oh, thank you.
Because the respiratory therapy equipment was actually bought through enhancement grant funding in Franklin Tech Center. And Franklin Tech Adult Education Program partners with Missouri Southern as Missouri extends that to bachelor's program. So the first two years are Franklin Tech, and then it moves on to Missouri Southern. And they've actually loaned invasive and non-invasive respirators as well to those hospitals. So we were very proud to announce that today during the press conference, and we're very happy to partner with our agencies as it's necessary. So thank you for that. And the last thing that I mentioned today was just the movement of our bond election from April 7th to June 2nd. And that has been kind of put on the back burner right now. But hopefully, in May, we can ramp up talks of that again and encourage our community to remember that issue and go to the polls.
Thank you, Dr. Moss, for that fantastic report. You answered a lot of questions that many of us have. I want to extend super kudos, just as Dr. Fort did, to everybody who's been feeding these kids. The efforts are greatly appreciated and impressive to me. I'd also like to express known frustration that our students are feeling. I've got one at home. She's missing her senior year of track.
Yes.
There's a lot of kids out there who are missing the activities and the education that our schools provide. I think it's really important that we recognize that. We understand their frustrations and the frustrations that their parents, I'm sure, are feeling from a kid who's all bottled up, not doing what he or she wants to do. So we're very mindful of everyone in this difficult time.
And Sherri, I might add, we're still in conversation with the high school principal and high school counselors, but I don't think it's premature to mention that we're very sensitive right now to the seniors and making sure that all of our graduates get across the finish line. And so we're looking at what seniors were in good standing as of third-quarter grades. And if this thing continues past April 3rd, then how do we take those seniors that still were struggling to accumulate their credits or maybe had a D or F as of third quarter? And all this work that we're planning, we only want to help and enhance our grades at this point. And our commitment is to get all of our seniors through credit recovery and enhancement of learning opportunities and get them across the finish line in May.
Thank you very much for that, doctor, as well. That's extremely important information, and I hope that our community is listening. Does that complete our reports, doctor?
I believe so.
Thank you very much. I assume there are no public comments this evening? Sir? We do have the media here. He might want to say something. I'm just teasing.
It will be in the table.
That moves us to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think that's Lori. I'm not sure. It's been moved and seconded that we approve our consent agenda. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our regular agenda, accounts payable. Dr. Langford?
You have a complete list of all the bills. When we go back and we take a look at, a year ago, we had, in this same timeframe, spent 5.38 million, and these bills totaled 5.17 million. So our spending, again, is remaining in line. If you look at the salaries, there is an increase compared to a year ago, but there were salary increases in this year's budget, so that was to be expected. We did have a decrease in the capital outlay compared to last year, but we weren't... We were remodeling this building last year, and we're not this year. And then if you look at the other expenditures, we are up a little bit compared. But overall, our budget is still in line with what we had projected at the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning the accounts payable? I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. And a second?
I'll take it.
Thank you, Brent. It's been moved and seconded that we approve payment of our accounts payable. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. That brings us to reading for first grade. Ms. Mwongi?
Yes, and I will just share with you, I have a few items back-to-back. And as Dr. Langford mentioned, our team has talked about necessary expenditures versus things that we want to hold on to. So the items before you tonight are budgeted items within our planned curriculum budget, some of them coming out of this year and some for next school year that we're going to be discussing. So the first one this evening is first grade into reading. Last year, about this time, you approved second through fifth grade into reading curriculum. And so this evening, we're presenting first grade to add to that for this series. There is a group, about half of our first grade teachers who piloted this material. We really wanted to make sure as we get into letters and the science behind reading that this complements the work that we're doing at the primary level. And what the teachers found is that there are a lot of very beneficial resources with this program. I will also note, because of our relationship with HMH and the amount of work that we do with them, this quote has went from what typically from the second through fifth grade would be near the 180 to cover the next five years, down to 152, down to the 140 that you see tonight. So we had some great negotiations as far as this item is presented for you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Does anybody have any questions of Sarah Mwongi concerning this Into Reading for First Grade action item? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Is there a second? Thank you, Brent. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of Into Reading for First Grade for $140,746.23. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you. That takes us to Project Lead the Way. That's a Gateway app creator. Again, Ms. Mwongi?
Yes, this is a middle school course, and I believe Michael Gurley may be online. Mike, are you there?
Yeah, I'm online.
Awesome. Thank you. So he's joining us tonight. Mike teaches at the high school, and he is one of our lead gurus as it relates to Project Lead the Way and kind of our coordinator for the district with that. So I'll let him share a little bit of information of how we kind of got to this point where we're looking to bring a course recommendation to you this evening. You will note in the fiscal section, we have mapped out what that will look like moving forward. But that particular item for the Android devices will not be brought for you tonight, but that'll give you an idea of what we're looking at that we'll be bringing to you with the later item. So Mike, if you want to share some exciting news for our eighth-grade offering?
Yeah, you're cutting out a little bit there.
Sorry.
We started with this course at the high school a few years ago with Project Lead the Way. And we instituted it now through two different pathways. One is through the biomedical program along through the engineering program. Project Lead the Way offers a middle school and an elementary school both curriculum that fits along those pathways. What's nice about this course is with the app creator, with the middle school students, they're excited about working with creating apps, working with iPads, working with their iPhones, saying different ones to be able to create these apps that, you know, that they use on a daily basis. And so this app creator will do a couple of things. One is it will help to be a good pilot program for the middle school. But then one is this will also help feed into Franklin Tech, their computer science program that they have. And so hopefully, that will open the door for some more students to have, you know, not only the Franklin Tech, but the high school computer science courses that we do offer currently, and increase their enrollment.
Thank you. And with this offering of this course description, we're looking at the eighth-grade multimedia elective. So that course would be replaced with this app creator. We have four teachers that we have scheduled to go to training in Kansas City during the month of June. Obviously, with the state of our nation right now, all of that is flexible at this point. But we want to go ahead and bring this material to you tonight, given that we can follow through with that. In the event that that training will not be able to take place, this is something that we will still come back to, but we may be another year out, depending on how our current situation unfolds.
Thank you, Ms. Mwongi. Does anybody have any questions of her or Mike concerning this particular agenda item? I will tell you that I put the screws to our administration concerning any items that addressed potential grant subsidies, and I'm assured that all grant subsidy opportunities are just that. They're not needed to meet the funding requirements, and that if we get grants, they are a windfall to our district. But we're not depending upon grant funding for any of the materials brought before us this evening. I would entertain a motion...
I would move that we approve the addition of the CLTW Gateway App Creator for Middle School Program.
Thank you, Brent. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this purchase. Please vote.
Yes.
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 That takes us to our middle school No Red Ink 2020-21, staying with Ms. Mwongi for a while longer.
Thank you. This is another item that is going to be, that has been budgeted and planned for for next school year. No Red Ink is a program that assists with writing and supports our teachers and students digitally. Our high school currently has it in the English department, and our middle school has it in a few locations. So what this will do is expand that for all middle school ELA teachers to have access to that material next school year. I will tell you, in the same regard, the next item that I'll be bringing to you, we are going to be discontinuing at the high school based on the new recommendation we have this evening. So the high school, we will stop No Red Ink, but then those funds will be repurposed down to the middle school level so we can expand that offering for our sixth through eighth-grade students.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Does anybody have any questions of her concerning this particular agenda item? Should we take all these together? Would it be okay to do that? Are you offended?
Yeah.
We'll keep going. That takes us to number G5 on our agenda, which is the ELA textbook adoption at Joplin High School.
Yes, and I believe I have Amber Cooney on the line. Amber, are you there?
I'm here.
Yes, thank you for joining us. Amber is an English teacher at Joplin High School. I believe you also were shared today a letter from Susan Primm, who is another English teacher at the high school, as well as the department head of the English department. This is a big deal for our high school English department, so I want to give Amber an opportunity to kind of share a little bit of history of how we've come to this recommendation tonight and the excitement and what this will do for our English department at the high school.
Okay, Amber, just kind of give you, I thought it was going to come out, but I talked too long. So we are excited about that. And I could talk for quite a while about how valuable this is. But any of this has been on the... I have here this letter from our department head, Susan Primm. And she was student with the school for a very long time, and she has been with previous departments. The last time they adopted a textbook, let's see here, was, it was many years before the 20th of December. And they were doing this kind of, and dumping, like studying the data, and doing my stuff, and best practices, and we followed these by tried, fighting orders and so forth. And eventually, they discontinued the style of textbooks that they were using, the reading consumable textbooks or this book. And that was really valuable because of the literacy and speeders. So that you can be able to kind of write on what you need and kind of mark it up and interact with it. But the consumables that they were using at the time were no longer for you to... So they discontinued them through the traditional textbooks. And then the Formato came in, and the textbooks started to stop using textbooks after the deadline.
Can I interrupt for just a minute?
Yeah, that's okay.
Someone that has less digits, two zero, I think?
That's their phone-in number to us, I think.
Okay. Somebody's computer's not muted.
That's their phone number, and it's two zero. Oh, it is their phone number?
Okay, go ahead and try it again. I think you'll come through better now.
Okay. So anyway, it was kind of one for you, Fort, with the history with Ms. Primm. And we have had a kind of a textbook similar to what we're hoping to adopt right now in the past. And that was when our scores have been some of the highest that they've been. And that's kind of Ms. Primm's account as the department head. Now, I mean, I am prepared with my super official list of the top five reasons that I think we should have them, and I can go on, or I can kind of just stop and field questions in terms of kind of where your heads are and what you think you would like to know. So just kind of tell me what direction you want me to go.
No, I think you're good. And I will share just my experience working with the English department this year. We started out the year really kind of dovetailing on the work that Dr. Gilbert had started of, okay, let's start some scope and sequence, let's start looking at some curriculum writing. And the more we got into it, we kind of resulted in, let's look at some material that's out there. And what they found with my perspective with Pearson, a lot of the classic novels they already are familiar with using, a lot of the material that we were trying to figure out and go through the weeds of that work, my perspective just came, and it actually was not the one they thought they would like. We were looking at a couple of different options. So once they got into this and reviewed the material, there's a good digital component. They will have some consumables for the students where they will be able to actually manipulate the text, which, if you talk to an English teacher, that is a crucial strategy when you're teaching English. So I know that I have several English teachers waiting on me to text them tonight to let them know how this went. So they're on pins and needles, excited that you are just as excited for them this evening in approving this adoption. And it will be a six-year adoption that we're presenting to you tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. I'd like to make a couple of things clear. First of all, thank you for being here on the phone with us. It's been a challenging meeting to talk to people through the audio. It kind of cuts in and out occasionally, but everything sounds good right now. I'd like to reiterate a few things that I believe were being mentioned, but kind of chopped up a little bit. We haven't acquired textbooks in this area in quite some time, and it's a needed update, is my understanding. We are being requested to acquire a higher-cost option. That option meets all learning, all Missouri learning standards, and it will also allow us to eliminate other components that we're currently paying for because it has additional qualities, components, that we don't need to buy in duplicates. So while we are, while what is being recommended to us is a little bit higher purchase price, it has advantages of meeting all the learning standards and the opportunity for us to eliminate some duplicate components.
Yeah, I will say there are additional professional development days built in to that quote compared to the other two quotes you see. So if you take the digital components that we won't be paying, and you take the added professional development that we have put in here, you're looking at very, very comparable pricing when you consider those two factors. And then on top of that, the department feeling like my perspective is the best quality of resource for them.
Great information. Thank you for sharing that with us, Sarah. Does anybody have any questions concerning this particular agenda item? ELA textbook adoption. Thanks, everybody. We'll move on to our summer school application. Should we? No, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe we'll do No Red Ink and the textbook, and then move to them.
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote for, we're on items four and five. We are going to, I would entertain a motion for items four.
Motion to approve, motion to approve items four and five.
Thank you, Mike. Is there...
That's from Debbie.
Thank you, Deb. Second... Thank you, Deb. Thank you, Dr. Ford. That's, the two doctors took care of the first and the second. Please vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, thank you all for that. That will take us now to the summer school application, which is a different issue than buying textbooks and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so this item was on our agenda for this month. It's a typical month to bring summer school application to you. We've changed the language a little bit, so we're definitely in uncharted waters. What summer school looks like for us as we anticipate it today may look very different as we move forward, but what we want to present to you tonight is the application that we do intend to offer summer school, the same dates and times that we have originally planned. And then should we need to make adjustments to that, we can come back to you with those adjustments. So this recommendation this evening will be to approve our summer school application that we have rebranded Super Summer, so we are very hopeful, very optimistic we'll be able to provide this, and it definitely will be a Super Summer for us to have summer school.
Well, and I think, I'm hopeful that the COVID situation will be much behind us at this point, and we will be able to offer summer school. We are still taking enrollments. We have that posted on our website, and other ways that parents can go ahead and sign children up. Summer learning loss is a real thing, and with what we're experiencing this spring, I think it's going to be even more crucial that all of our parents seriously consider sending their students to summer school. It strengthens us academically, it gives kids challenging and quality things to do during their summer break, and it also impacts us fiscally. So if we are not able to offer summer school, we're going to see yet another revenue hit. So we need to be promoting this for many reasons.
And we're finding silver linings in a lot of the situation that we're in. We have moved all K-8 this year for summer school to online enrollment, so there is a form online, and they do not have to worry about how they're going to get to the school to enroll for summer school. Those links are online. High school is still a paper copy due to credits and how that works, but for our kindergarten through eighth grade, that is online that we can continue promoting.
Thank you, Ms. Wongi. Thank you, Dr. Moss. I would entertain a motion to approve the summer school application to DESI for the 2020 summer school program.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mike.
One second.
Thank you, Brent. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this agenda item. Please vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yes.
Yes.
Good job.
Sorry.
You're good, Deborah. So that brings us to the purchase of six school buses. We'll give Ms. Wongi a break for a moment, and go to Dr. Cicada.
Okay, as Mike, anywhere, Mike. As Mike Bevis comes in to talk about this in a little more detail. As you know, over the last several years, we've made a commitment to purchase as many school buses as we can within the budget, and try to also improve our fleet drastically over the years, and we're starting to get to a point where we've made some really good strides, and this year is no different. So Mike's here to talk about the purchase of six new buses for next school year, and answer any questions you might have when it comes to the differences in the cost, the differences in the strategy that we use when we wrote the specs, and which basically were the same specs we used last year, and the ability of the different companies to meet those.
Right. So we always try to get three bids each year. We usually get at least four people to respond, saying they will give us bids, and we go with that. And then, lo and behold, the last day that we get our bids, we get like two folks that will bid, and one will send what they call a no bid, that they weren't able to give us the specifications of their bid. So we did end up getting two bids again this year, three responses, but two bids. We had the bid from Midwest Transit, which is an international bus, at $614,108, and we had Midwest Bus Sales, which is a Thomas bus, which is the first time we've gotten a bid from them, so I was glad to see them put in a bid. They did come in a little lower, at $608,239. Now, when we look at the bid specs, we want to have out to the side of each specification that we are requesting, they have yes or no. You can meet this bid spec, or you cannot. When we look down through those, Midwest Transit, which is International, can meet all but, I think, 10 on their spec, and when we go with the, and forgive me if I get these confused, but it's Thomas and International, but they have similar names. So Midwest Bus Sales, which is Thomas, are, come up 61 short on the requirements or specifications that we asked for. So at least 11 of those that we went through and found were safety issues. Not that their buses are unsafe, but they're not as safe as the specs that International can come up with on their buses. So things like the calipers on the brakes. One system which International has, has four cylinders in those brakes, which is for better braking. Thomas would only have two pistons in there, or two cylinders. Bumpers are another spec that we keep, International has bigger, thicker bumpers, International or Thomas has smaller bumpers that are not as thick. But there's several other items. If you're interested, I can read them all to you tonight, but at the end of the day, myself, Justin Henson, my assistant, who's over the mechanics, as well as the mechanics look at it, and you just can't get the safety comparison that International offers. Yes, they're a little higher, but that also comes with the software that they provide us for those type of buses, that Thomas does not include with their bus, that will be an extra expense that will come very close to measuring up to that safe price.
Thank you very much for bringing that to us, Mike. I note in this particular item that you've offered very specific reasons, three of them outlined, and I'm sure that there may be more, as to why we would accept a bid that is $1,000 per bus more. If we consider that per bus, it's less than 1% per bus of an increase, so that's a pretty reasonable variance to accept when you're considering the safety of our kids. So I would certainly, this time, accept a motion from the board for the purchase of these six buses.
I would move that we approve the purchase of the six new buses from Midwest Transit Bus, worth a total of $614,108.
Thank you, Brent. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Deborah. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of these buses. Is there any additional conversation or discussion to be had? Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mike, for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike, and you'll be on the road delivering again tomorrow.
Yep.
Ah, yeah.
Mike's done an incredible job to get his transportation department into the food truck business.
Yeah, great team to do that.
Kudos, kudos.
Wheels on wheels.
That's right. We'll stay with Dr. Cicada and our Joplin High School Chromebook cases.
Yes, as you know, we decided to go with the Chromebooks, and you made that purchase, that commitment, last board meeting, and-
And not knowing what the economy would do, aren't we glad we did?
Yes, yeah, no question. Another big savings. So anyway, Eric will talk to you a little bit about the difference in the Chromebook cases, and a little bit of experience that we've had with the previous version, and so which is, kind of gives us a reason why we were going with a little bit more expensive because of the quality of product.
The reason we're going with the case that we suggest, which is a little more expensive than one of the other ones that came in, we went with a similar bag-like approach at the eighth grade level when we first introduced the Chromebooks, and we were seeing a pretty high damage rate, plus those bags were coming apart, the cloth-like bags were coming apart a little bit, and the rubber corners were peeling up, and this bag is the one we, pardon, this case that we are recommending actually was the one we showed you at the last board meeting, with the rubber that goes all the way around. And if you ever take a look at our MacBook Airs, it's a good thing that they're like made of like a metal alloy, because you notice the dents and dings where the kids have dropped it on the corners and stuff. So that's one reason we're recommending the case that we're recommending. Because in the long run, we've already had to replace, we've gone to these cases at the middle school, and we're starting to pass those out this, well, we were going to start passing them out here shortly. I don't know if any of them actually made them out to the students or not because of the shutdown, but that's why we're recommending these cases that we recommend.
Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions of Eric concerning this purchase cases? We are going for the second bid on this, which is more expensive than the lowest, but again, it's a functioning issue. Apparently, the lower-valued cases are not effectively performing their jobs, protecting our computers for our kids. Of course, if we could depend on kids to treat computers well, we wouldn't have this issue at all, would we? Golly, these students, what are we going to do with them?
Eric, I have a question, not about the cases, but for Eric. Should we go to online learning for the rest of the year? Would these Chromebooks be ready? Would you guys have time to put all of the different software on there that you needed in order to use these and the Mac simultaneously?
We don't, we do not have the Chromebooks in quite yet. Our original timeline was to get them ready by the end of the year, so we could pass them out before-
Right.
-kids left for the summer, and that since over half of them were going to be probably used in summer school anyways, like last year.
Right.
We're trying to lean on Dell to speed that up, so hopefully, I don't foresee them being ready before the end of April.
Okay.
But we are leaning on Dell to try to get them in here quicker.
I would move that we approve the purchase of the JHS Chromebook cases. Second.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Mike. Is there any further discussion? Please vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That brings us to our plus deltas. Dr. Moss.
Actually, we need to look at the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I apologize. Yeah, we've got the Jasper and Bye County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I apologize, that was added to our agenda.
Yeah, and I think you guys got a copy sent to you rather late this afternoon, but it just came to our attention, and the deadline is before our next meeting. So Carrie, you've got some background on that.
Yes, annually, we get a survey from Jasper County, Newton County planners, to make sure that we're still in line, and we have safety plans put in place. Jim Hounshell and I go through those plans, and we submit a document to them that's really more extensive than this document. But about every four to five years, that they ask, that we make a commitment through a resolution at a board meeting to participate in the program, and to participate in the program is very advantageous, God forbid we have some kind of event like we did almost 10 years ago. And so whether you have a flood, you have stormwater problems, you have tornadoes, you have fires, you have any kind of natural disaster, to get FEMA funding and to work with the local agencies, we really need this plan. There's no cost to the district, it's a participation, and it's also to be able to continue to give them data and information annually, to make sure that everybody is kind of on the same page, and also share their practice.
Thank you, Dr. Cicada. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Cicada concerning the proposal to approve the adoption of the Jasper and Bye County Hazard Mitigation Plan? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this proposal. Please vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Now that brings us to our plus deltas.
Well, one more thing.
Pardon me.
We originally had our April Board of Education meeting scheduled for April 21st to get in the swearing-in of our new officers and reorganization of the board. Now that the election has been postponed, we have been given guidance that since Jeff Kochsey was on the ballot, and that's because we had a bond issue, then that also moves to after the June 2 election. So my question for the board is, do we wish to go back to our fourth Tuesday and reschedule the April board meeting for April 28th, or do you want to keep it at the third Tuesday of April?
I would keep it on the third Tuesday.
I don't have a question. No preference for me?
No, none here.
Yeah, truthfully, I have no preference, but I just thought we probably already got it on the third on most of our calendars, so why would we change that for that purpose?
Okay, we'll keep it on the third Tuesday, which will be April 21st, I believe.
And we'd like to welcome Deborah Gould's continuing service to her school district.
It is my pleasure.
It is ours as well.
Now.
Now, I think we can go to plus deltas. I'll give you the pluses. Technology is an amazing thing. We're able to conduct this meeting safely and securely with you folks off-site, and I appreciate your participation and your patience. For me, everything has been heard quite clearly. I suspect that at times, you've heard mumbling or something in the distance from wherever you are, and I appreciate you hanging in there with us. So I just want to thank you as board members, I want to thank those people who were invited, who attended remotely, for their participation, and I want to thank everybody here present for being here and getting this thing to take off as well as it has. It has not been any sort of burden to me whatsoever, I can tell you, and I'm very, very grateful.
I just want to add that Derek has been texting me, oh, gosh.
Can you push that at him? It just popped up on our screen, Brent.
Uh-oh.
I think we lost Brent for a minute.
Well, we're gonna admit Derek.
No, not that one.
Derek, yes.
Hey, Derek.
Hey, Derek.
So Derek just popped up on our screen to join the meeting. Welcome. We're on plus deltas.
The plus is that you're now here.
I have some pluses to share with you, just in respect to handling the situation that we have. Over the past two days, departments and grade levels have been meeting virtually. We are being very proactive, so our community can feel very confident that should we anticipate a long-term closure, our teaching staff is working through and getting prepared for what that may look like for them. I will tell you, out of the to-dos that I have given them over the past two days, half of them are already done with step one. And on top of that, our phone survey that they have been conducting, out of K-12, about 7,600 kids, we currently have 5,434 completed, and the two big pieces that we are really curious about was, how many devices do you have, and do you have access to internet? And we were guessing we're at the 50% mark, and so far, what that data looks like, having at least one device in their home, and this does not include cell phones, we only have 10% with zero.
Oh, my gosh.
And of those that have internet access, those who do not have internet access were at 12.8%.
Awesome.
So given that data-
Good stat.
Seems like we've got access.
I feel very confident as far as the community of kind of what we're looking at, given this unprecedented time, the opportunity we will have to still engage in learning should we not return to school.
And that's only with two days.
That is only two days.
That's how many you've reached in just two days.
Our educators have stepped up to the plate, and they are rocking enrollments.
I can tell you, they contacted our house, and we really appreciate it.
Well, and I will share, we had a preschool parent share with us today that her parent educator for the Parents as Teachers program had given them a call, and they had had their first virtual Parents as Teachers visit, and she said that her child had drawn shapes, and they had read stories together, and she said it was refreshing to step back from the news and the stress, and have that time with her parent educator, and she then reached out to the district to thank us for that. So things are going on that I even forget to mention, in addition to the meals and all the things that are happening. So Joplin knows how to address adversity, and not only address adversity, but to thrive. And I have been extremely impressed with what's been going on in the last few days.
I have a question and a comment, of course. First, thank you, I know you guys have worked incredibly hard to put this together, and I appreciate how the community is joining in.
I appreciate how the community is joining in. I wonder, for our families that don't have internet, has anyone done any research into what it would cost to buy a hotspot to send it to those homes? Has anyone researched that?
I think Eric knows a little bit about that. We've also been getting updates of some low-cost internet accessibility for families through, Eric, was it AT&amp;T?
Well, Sparklight has actually changed. They're $10 a month now, and I believe they waived the installation fee.
Okay, so Sparklight, $10 a month, waiving activation fees. And then what are the hotspots, Eric? That's more like a Verizon account or something like that, isn't it?
The only thing, the only thing I've noticed on the hotspots so far is actually, they've waived their data cap, and so you don't get throttled or charged extra. They've just, they've removed their data cap, so they've gone to unlimited. So like you get into.
We have a hotspot in our home because we're not in an AT&amp;T area, and it works fine. I asked for two reasons. In my children's school in Arkansas, families about were provided a hotspot box. And then also asking, because I have students in my position that don't have internet. So I was just wondering what all you guys have been able to discover for low cost. But thank you, Eric, for that update. Thank you, guys, for everything you're doing. I know it's incredibly stressful, and you're doing a wonderful job.
And I would say, if we, we are also making plans for hard copies, and we have plans in place, should we be closed long-term, to use our meal service drop-off or pickup locations, that we will be directly communicating with those families that need hard copy packets and helping make sure that they have resources as well. So we should have all of our bases covered through the current planning that's going on.
Are they needing any diesel volunteers or anything for the food pickup?
Not at this time, Lori. We've been able to cover that with our paid employees, but I'm always interested in who's ready to volunteer, because as we expand services to perhaps include the childcare for our healthcare and first responders, we could get to a point where we might need some volunteer help with that as well. But so far, with our own staff, we've been able to cover those things.
I will keep you in mind if you need anything.
Thank you.
I'll offer a delta. We lost Dr. Joseph a moment ago. He texted me and said he dropped out of his call. I'm not sure if he's trying to reconnect or not, but we certainly appreciate that he was here as when he could be.
I was mentioning before I lost my connection, Derek had difficulty logging on, and I was trying to help him throughout, sending him the email, but I've noticed him popping up back and forth here, but I'm not sure if he was with us, but I just thought I would mention that.
I can see him, but I haven't heard him.
Yep.
Yeah, he doesn't have volume and he can't speak. He's not sure what the issue is with that, but.
Well, if we have to do this again next month, maybe we can test that out before the meeting and get him on.
Yeah, yeah. I think he had said there was, he has a different email that he checks regularly, and so I'm sure he'll contact Patton, try to take care of that, so.
Okay, thank you, Brent.
I would entertain a motion to dismiss, to adjourn, whatever this is. Dismiss is a legal term, I apologize.
Salute.
Thank you, Brent. Is there a second?
One second.
I think that was Deborah. It's moved and seconded that we adjourn. Please vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and we still got a quorum to even leave. I was worried I was going to have to stay all night. So thank you all very much. We appreciate everyone's assistance in conducting this evening's meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.